Tuesday, six thirty. First thing on the agenda is to run nine people to the vote tomorrow. I'll be watching it. And it is six thirty because you've got such a clock cycle in the back of your mind. Appointments will be done. Have we come yet? Have we come yet? Maybe we need to wait. Committee to liaise our votes. We want to go. So, I had, uh, HGC, they didn't have any appointments but they did work sessions. They were changing for witnesses. So then we moved to some vendors. Uh, and then the population commission had been needed. They, uh...
I'm going to have you clear it. Um, nothing that we want. It's had to do with any wanting that, right? The family of thirty, um, things that we received, so, um, mainly straightening up the way that we're aware of how it is and making sure everything is available to them. Okay. And I hear, um, looking at the relationship to both the women's and the children's, to the highlight of the home, and we do that with that company, we are the medical, we are the supervisor, it's one of the things we need to come in. And, um, Joe, about the home setting, it's fragile. So, it's really something that can go on. We have a bunch of truth stories. And so we made a board to think of, oh, actually, you're right. I'm sorry. I said it. So I just found that, you can totally let them, I don't have to, um, not just the church, like they work for, but I have four women that work for me. So they, um, they did have three different roles. The other one was the, um, leader to see your town in Boston. So, the business agent, Matt Angel, the, um, virgin energy, he was going to the school because the next thing would be a, uh, letter that we would have assigned to the virgin energy team that gave us the select, uh, one, one in the... Locations and it was a ball, particularly about the public presentation, if I was to see what they're following, um, but the next step is to do some more, they had to have cost them, and they, they were involved by how they were coming through this. It's, um, interesting. And Mrs. Wayne, further afield from the reality as far as I can see, big eyes, and the one that supported them was, uh, 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 to speak, to put glory in the nation, because they had such an impact, because I looked at that presentation, uh, from the last, last two years, and when you carried out hours of the night, he stands, he missed it, but still he was losing, he was like seven hundred thousand, I suppose, or one point two million. So that has already been very intimidating regarding the lights, which has endless effect of like a number of kilowatts, which is why, no, looking at three other cities opposed to the rainfall. So I, I'll tell you that, I'm not happy with the direction, Mrs. Wayne, because it's not the service of the nation. I was involved, the trust, as a trusted landlord, and the landlord would get what he, and couldn't use the phone, and it didn't, it wasn't a watch, he wouldn't say what he meant, so there was a small area that they can use. I know it's an education, but this is very strong judgment, I wasn't like, this, um, music, and now this one, so I had a feeling they had a safe direction. And twice over, if they lose their roof at that school, that roof is already seventeen years old, so they're getting, even if they pay for them, their roof is usually, they're already, or very familiar, because otherwise, five years, we're only having to take the roof, so, to fix the roof, we could look back at, which is a total risk to me. So I, I just, I wanted to, once I saw the presentation, I wouldn't lie to you. And we're not citizens, take advantage of solar array panels, but if it's a watch, I'm not in favor of spending the money in the debt. Just saying, like, right now, I could change, there are more information, better proposals, I could change my mind, but I just want you to be aware, there's some dark sites going on here, they're not a figure necessarily.
I think the, uh, dark sites out of the west end, because they're still testing and doing everything there.
What type of yours, those that, right?
Yeah, that has been released, and I just got that, but they, but any part of the machine, they were, they're still, they're testing last week, so, we will get a report eventually someday on that.
And the third one is also, before we look at many connected stations, is that correct? We have a twenty-four up here, and...
It's a twenty-one twenty-five.
Well, the one on the twenty-five is across the magazines.
No, but they get so high in there. Um, they, they had it all broken down, on, but the school, if you take over the high school, they realize and move saving because it's a direct, they get the direct energy, they're not buying it, they're a can.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, okay, all right.
But the next, the next step is...
The high school, because we share half the clocks, wouldn't you, well, there would be some savings.
But the, the next step is the school board has to buy into it.
Yeah?
Because we're a state school. So that's the next thing, is waiting for, then the new presentation, the school boards will decide that, like, pretend along with the town of Kingston.
Except, well, the burden, the financial burden, rest of the town of Kingston, because I believe it's because of the municipal aspect of the, the town, that we get the opportunity to put these solar panels in. Could be wrong in that, but I thought it was because in character of municipality, and the school is considered by the municipality located in our town. If the school was driving the bus, it would include the buildings, and it doesn't. It only includes the Kingston businesses, which tells me that it's only the municipality of Kingston that is looking for, looking towards doing this, so, that's gonna have some bearing.
More information, Paul.
It's a good way to put it.
Doctor.
All right. Yeah, we have a few things, obviously, in the, uh, in the, uh, in our forward, the post-Kingston Public Works Organization, so...
Is that one, is he, you the liaison?
Yeah, yeah, okay. Um, so, it's the other side of what we've been talking about. Put some people with some titles there, I guess, just to pull it in. We need to do...
Well, I don't think we took a poll on the...
No, no, I didn't, I just, just for information, I just put the, we were talking about it, I just, I should get a poll for everybody, you know, quickly. Um, you know, we have a, ask the, one of the other courses, the, uh, fire department, you know, we've got a copy of that. You know, when else on the, um...
Nineteen.
Yeah, nineteen to the one, so, um, eleven, so, um, town, we have to do that. Um, I'm here. Because I hear, so, it's one of the factors that I'm, that's, that's, I gave away on the board, so... Um, the other thing that you've got, I think you've got, just got today to do, is, um, Phil had come up with some, uh, ideas, and one of them being the one where traffic on the planes were nonviolent and not ready, um, there's one out of the one about...
That'll get people out.
I think, you know, it's a good idea, but, but, spending a lot of money on whatever, I do see what the, what the population likes, is to talk to ten people and five, four, five against it, so, so it's an idea, it's a thought, there is reminders on that, and I have to, uh, I haven't, have we ever done, I don't have any calls in, on, by, from Kingston, never ever.
No, you got it.
Yeah.
That's three minutes, but you...
It's just curious question, I mean...
I don't, they might have something back in the seventies, but I don't remember that.
The other, um, thing that Phil was looking at, you can better explain, if you want to do this, this, uh, slowly day capital reserve fund, that's, it's, but the information's in there, the explanation's in there, is to, um, try to set up a, um, a capital reserve fund for the, so, the ice and sand, the asphalt, and having a fund there so that, um, money can be, run through, let me have money, I've got the reserve fund, and I've got the general fund, so we're not having to, budget money, and I said we don't have enough money, we have to use the other one to cover something, so, um, I, to talk about it now, we can, we can, just got it today, so, we may not put on the agenda to say exactly what the plan is there.
But maybe we'll make on the agenda in case there's any public comment.
Yeah. Uh, the other, the last thing is, first budget committee meeting was the other night, I got to say, um, six, about three hours, um, the first apartment was, was an hour, which would be expected, this biggest budget, and I think, uh, Nick was his liaison, and he was in there today, and he was there, had a very good presentation, they cut the budget at, cut his budget down from thirty-one percent to twenty-four, based on some actions, the figures they did, it's got that, but, but it kind of understood where they were with that. The other issue that the budget committee has, that, that, and it goes back to us a little bit, was, they were asking the question as to why the code wasn't figured in there, uh, as we did last year, so we did explain, we did explain, um, about the fact that we talked about the, the, versus putting in the budget, um, and there's some concern with, with that aspect of it, they prefer to see it on the budget, you know, on everybody's, under everybody's budget, as we did last year, um, you know, we discussed the fact is that, because on the budget, the budget hits the ball, you know, nothing, um, although putting one out, or putting one out the bound, there's no particular code, uh, thing there. So, we need to, maybe talk about that at some point, before we get too far along, budgets as to what, what our actual idea is for, for that. Some of the thought is, you know, we also have, gotta work on, in fact, the second budget, the budget is the paper performance, and, you know, maybe there's something there, this is code, it's a different scenario, but at the same time, it's putting money in, and we've got money in there for the paper performance.
But again, it's just a default budget, that goes up to...
Do you think it's considered?
Yes, same as code, it's a difference.
Well, because it's, it's, it has history, and I'm not sure, I, I've been trying to get answers, and there's nobody anymore that can answer, so...
I will then...
It may be better off, so that's the...
Which was why we talked about it. Let's, uh, we talked about it, but I just, that was it, I probably had a whole thing left, um, nothing else changed much, conservation, speaking of conservation and trails, they have a thousand dollars in, they said, no trail maintenance, um, there's two thousand, and they, they haven't had any for, 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 for trail maintenance, so we thought we had a hundred thousand dollars there.
They put very large funds in.
Yes, and I thought, you paid four hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, they've, I can't remember what it is, but they were, but it's restricted on what they can spend.
Use that, sure.
Especially when you ask them.
Yeah, that's, 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 yeah.
Other than that, there wasn't any, uh, made, made changes there.
That fund is very specific about how it can be spent, it's supposed to be done for, um, forest...
Forest protection or something.
Maintenance, so, I don't know if trails can fall for that.
Uh, other than that, Sunday night, it's called Firehouse, is the next one, next group of...
That's why we had you there, so I didn't have to be there.
Uh, that's about it for that committee.
Okay. Um, next is the memo from the town planner about the Lone Tree camping.
Has he been in quite a year?
He hasn't made an appointment yet, as far as I know, but I, I haven't talked to Glenn either, which is a letter. Um, because we know, it's been brought to our attention from a few people that they have winter activities, but, they can have winter activities and not be approved, winter activities in the past, so we gotta find out, or they do.
Only a wedding on a nice weekend is one thing, but people can't buy permanent, they send a dog to the party.
Yeah, and I seem to remember the conversations when they came for the planning board, you know, we had discussed that, we understood that they had some youth events, especially like scouting, like, that would happen over the winter, like, they would come out for a weekend, because they wanted to get their optic badge, they had to camp during certain temperatures, and I think the planning board had agreed that, okay, yeah, some of those youth camping events that still need to occur, outside the regular season, you know, that are like the exception, not the rule, but I don't think there was, I don't recall anyone having an assumption that it would be year-long campsite slums.
Well, they read, they read the letter back the other night, they sent it, and they never disputed the letter.
Yeah.
And the letter says you can maintain a youth camp, like you have a badge, anything else will need approval.
Yeah.
And they're fine with it then, but now they've been called, they're not, so...
It's, it's funny, it's, uh, past, when, when it was, when, when it was on, as they were starting camp, were there, and like you say, if they have a jamboree or something in October or November, but, was there people in there during the winter?
Well, some people are saying there was, but that doesn't mean it's legal.
Okay, well, I'm just not able to always read it, or...
I mean, you know, some of these people are getting in the seasonal houses, and we don't catch them for winter, the next winter they say, well, it's been last winter there, that doesn't mean it's legal, they just did. Do you want to come?
Please.
We know that people have been there, so don't, you don't need to talk about that, and you need to go to the table, state your name, address, need to sit there so the camera will pick you up. And you need to speak very loudly.
Very loud, I'm good at that. Thank you for all you do for our town, I appreciate the people that work for our town, I really do. And, um, my name is Sandra Data, I care about our town.
Good to ask.
Ten, one Cannon Road, Kingston, New Hampshire, um, I live on Country Pond Waterfront. Um, just so you know, I went to San Juan Seminary, I'm seventy, I'm gonna be seventy-four this month, years old, and on my fifteenth birthday, I was in the seminary building on the second floor, in civics class, when President Kennedy was assassinated. So, I know a lot about the town, and I love our town. Um, I get notifications by email, I think it must be Susan that sends out the emails, and, um, I always look to see what agendas are, and what the, um, minutes, meeting minutes are, and everything, and I happened to notice that, um, for tonight, on the agenda was a memo from town planner, radio tree camping, and I thought, gee, what's that about? Um, so I came to the selectmen's office today and asked if I could see a copy of the, um, of that, um, memo. Um, I, I, you know, I happened to know quite, quite a lot about Lone Tree, when it was a scout camp. Um, for more than fifteen years, I have had permission to, to, um, hike over there, all of the trails, and, um, I, the original, Will, who was the, um, ranger over there, and lived in the, in the house that, all the way in, Will gave me permission to walk over there with my dog, and to my sons, and whatever I wanted to. And not only that, some of the, um, people that managed the scout camp also gave me permission, in fact, one of them was here tonight, and he, um, I walked over there all the time, except when it was real hot, when, when the activities, scout activities going on over there, but mostly, I hiked there on, um, late fall, during the winter, and, uh, in the spring, early spring. I, I liked to go, I always have loved going over there in the snow. My dog doesn't get ticks when it's cold like that, in the snow, so, I like, I've always done it, all the time, almost every day, and that's part of why I'm in this kind of condition at this age, is because I hike over there. And when I was over there, in the wintertime, there were, um, all manner of people over there, and I would always talk, and say, I, they were there camping, and they kind of looked at me, if, you know, because there were groups over there, they were at the time, camping. I, I can show you, if, if you go right down to where there's, um, parking, over on the left, go up the hill, over there, there were always four, or five, or six tents, and they'd be camping there. Or they'd be camping right, um, right where, you know, the, um, the middle of it is, where they first go in, or they'd be in the buildings camping, because there's some, uh, buildings there that have, um, they, they get heat with the wood stoves in them, you know, and, and so I always, always saw all kinds of things, sometimes there would be, um, um, several families there together, then, they really grownups, ch- uh, children, they build, you know, um, snow, uh, snowmen, beautiful cute, snowmen, you know, with their kids and everything, and they were camping over there, every single winter, a lot of people, and, they never, I, you know, it was just, and all, they also would cook turkeys there, they took, they cook outside, and, and, and cook turkeys, cook food right outside, in the, in the, um, you know, things you could cook it with, stuff, you know, and everything, and, so, when I read this, I was like, wow, I, you know, why would, you know, because it wasn't scouts that were there at the time, it, it was, it was, it was people that, that, people that just went in there and camped, and they weren't, they weren't the scouts.
Good.
They were allowed to go in there and camp, and they told me, I, because I would say to them, I have permission to be here, just because they kind of looked at me like, shoot that. So I walked over and introduced myself, I'm Sandy, you know, and, and I have permission to be in here. Oh, good, so, so do we, and they weren't scouts.
They know there were campuses there in the winter, so you don't have to convince us that, we already know that. They, they thought we had, that, maybe I'll give a little background, we got a complaint towards the end of summer, that the campuses there were very loud, partying, uh, the police were called, I went down there the next day, there were dozens of alcohol beverages on the picnic tables, they definitely had a party, and then we had a complaint again, and the police were called, probably two weekends ago, and that's what sparked all this, is why are there dozens there camping?
I should start calling the police for, because when you tell them on Country Pond...
It only hit them subject.
Who even shooting across Country Pond, my neighbor next door had somebody...
Not a matter, it's still this issue, because that's, we have to follow the agenda, but we're just, right now, we're still doing investigations and decide, trying to decide how to handle it, because the planning board, when they came in and told us what they were doing, were specifically, wrote him a letter, saying you can do a youth camp, any other changes will be required planning board approval, and they said they were fine with that, and then when they got called, they're not fine with it, and they want some changes. So that's where we are now, and we're trying to decide how to do it, so...
Well, I think, I think they're good for, for our town, they, um, the scouts didn't pay in taxes, and I, I, I kind of looked it up, and, you know, this, this, this is a lot of taxes, that this, doing, whatever, you know, the owners pay, which is good for our town, and I also think that it's good for our town because camping is so good for people, it's, you know...
Right, but just to clarify the tax issue, they're not paying any more for taxes because they have campus, or whether they do or don't, they're taxed on land and buildings, not on the people. I mean, we've had businesses in town that aren't doing very well, that wanted tax.
I just hope they don't leave because they can't afford the taxes, because, I'll tell you...
They don't leave the taxes where they bought it.
Well, I just, I just hope that they earn enough money in there, because we were so happy, a lot of us on Country Pond, we were ecstatic and so glad, that there was, it was not gonna be, you know, a huge housing, you know, condo thing, or somebody digged up the land over there and everything for the sand, we were happy that it was for a way to camp.
And, you know, the other thing, I'll say, is what I told you today in the office, you're across the lake, and it's the people, the scout side of the lake were getting complaints for the people that were right next to it.
You know, that side of the lake, they're setting off fireworks, also a war, and it's not...
That's another issue too.
It really is, I'm telling you, there's nothing you can do about it, you know, it just goes, oh, 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 and we were partying, a lot of parties, across the lake, and bands down, you know, coming, up facing, like, um, towards the marshland, or towards, you know, um, Lone Tree, down that end, which is...
Right, that's, we don't get into that, we have to follow the...
I'm just telling you, that's important.
Okay, thank you. So basically, this is still in the research area, so we're trying to figure out...
I'm on my way.
You need to go.
Evening, folks. My name is Eric Towne, I'm manager of Lone Tree, for my co-host, Rob Plus. Um, I wasn't really prepared to speak tonight, because I was not notified, I didn't, meeting, um, but hearing, I mean, there was a topic, obviously, it was important that I come, actually. Um, you know, noise complaints, I don't really see how that's a, a matter of the select. Number one, I've never received a noise complaint, I live there, the only noise I've ever heard was the music last two weekends ago, from somewhere else, that people complained to me, it wasn't me, so, you know, that's kind of questionable, as to, do you agree that nobody came from us, or whatever? Um, you know, with respect to, to drinking on a property, if I remember correctly, the picnic table with the bottles on it, that was the owners of the property, and the tenant and friends, and they...
That's an issue too.
And then, why, it's not a...
It's not a youth camp, it's, it's, it was...
It, it's our...
It was presented to be used as youth camp, where when I went down there, there were two picnic tables with a lot of liquor, and bottles, with tents all around, like, they had a party, that was the day I had complaints about people skinny, they'd been partying, screaming all over, and we know, no idea about that, you know, if somebody had called me, I certainly could have, you know, addressed it, you know, that, that would have been nice, um...
Don't you live on that, you said you lived in the property?
Yeah.
So you didn't go there?
No. We were here twenty-seven acres, I was probably asleep.
I like to say, this isn't, we're not, we're not trying to shut anything down, you know, no, no, they're investigating, it's just...
Yeah, I get that, but again, you know, I mean, if somebody just picked up the phone, you know, I mean, it's, we're not bad people, we're not trying to get away with anything.
But would they know how to get ahold of you?
Google Lone Tree, he doesn't know what it's called, it's been there since nineteen forty-six, I mean, take it on.
Want to leave your phone number with our administrative assistant?
I'm sorry?
Can I give you the phone number?
Sure, nine seven eight, nine seven nine, ninety-one hundred.
Give it to me.
Yeah, that's news to me, certainly, skinny, definitely, I would do that.
You definitely did an explore.
Shh, shh, shh. Uh, and I want to press up on this letter from the planning board, about the grandfather status, it says nothing about youth, and it says that continuing the use of Lone Tree Scout preservation as a summer camp will not require any further review by the planning board.
And it say youth summer camp?
No.
And, uh.
Where the, I'd say youth camp. No. And, uh, yeah, if, my very simple understanding of real estate is, is, you know, Lone Tree has been a year-round public camping facility since nineteen forty-six. We're not doing anything different than has ever been done there. It's never been restricted to just scouts or just youth or anything like that, you know, it's, we're not trying to get away with anything. We're just trying to leave it alone.
Like I said, we're in the investigating.
I just, I don't have any favorites or anything yet.
I'm not, I'm just, you know, I'm trying to, you know, all this, I mean, with that. Citizens tell us that, but.
Yeah.
You know. Some people, some people have the same opinion as her, some don't. So we're listening to both sides of it.
Sure, sure. Be a little hostile.
No, get your phone, that's a good thing. Thank you. New business.
Can I, can I make one more question?
Uh.
Can I make that? Yeah, I have some new information. Well, it is a move to make, uh, to clarify your question, so I lived in Boy Scouts since nineteen sixty-six. Now, apparently, a little bit of cable maps, but I lived in Lone Tree from nineteen eighty-six to two thousand and ten, it's a campering. So I was fully by the Boy Scouts of America, and we did rent a Lone Tree that wasn't just scouting, it was all kinds of group, families, and people would come across, they were skiing in the winter. So once, once year-round, we had a competition, I could dig up, since we moved, I'm not sure where it is. But we showed that during the seasons that we're at summer camp, we, we now have five thousand people in a year in that camp. I mean, it's kind of, I don't know, we, we would have three hundred people a weekend in that camp, year-round.
Anything you can dig up, I will.
Okay, I, I, you know, I was about half the year round, because that's, I mean, and there again, like I said, well, just because you've been there year-round doesn't mean that it's important for you. No, since nineteen forty-six, the news like that.
Okay, so I've been down since sixty-six, so I know, you know, we've, I would dig up what you can.
I, I wish it all to come.
You, you know, the reason we look into these situations, people camping, hanging out, spending time, is for safety, life safety issues. How do we know, I mean, it's one thing to come in for a weekend, you have a hundred people that come in for a wedding or or outdoor experiential education program, oh, that's great. Do you have the right seating system? Do you have enough room? Is there garbage disposal? Those are the issues that are pertinent to any activity on an outdoor facility. You get five thousand people in a year, are they all there at the same time? Do they all camp out from September to May? I, I'm just giving you.
I'm not, I'm.
Of what, you know, we have to look at not just what you think you're doing down there, but we gotta think what other people think of it, and, and make sure that it's safe for people to inhabit the area and that you're protecting the water and the environment. Because that's part of the, that's part of the trust of that property, if I'm correct, that it's, it's through the US Department of Agriculture, so it's gotta, gotta have some standard of, of conservation as well.
Right. Well, I'm just saying, we need to conservation, you know, it's.
I'm not saying we do, I'm just explaining why we would get to situations.
And a lot of, a lot of the women camping was to train you how to camp in the winter. And the good thing about Lone Tree was always, there were camping sites, but there were cabins that of kids or people, anybody who was there, got cold, then you'd go in there at night with a wood stove. Because people, you know, that was part of, you know, people camp, and you want to make sure they're safe.
Well, I mean, when you were doing that, you probably had plenty of supervision. Now it sounds like there's not much, if no one knew what was going on two weekends ago and then.
Well, there's always one person staying.
Yeah. Now, if somebody goes in a tent and their heat goes up and freezes, that first person they're gonna come to is the town. Why'd you allow people to camp in the winter?
Well, the, yeah, the first person they go to is the owners who look at the house.
So we have to worry about the legality of the towns and as much of everything, because even though I hate to say it, the world has changed, everybody reacts to everything.
No, I don't react. Yeah, I, I, I just want to clarify that with you.
Like I said, if you can get me any documentation.
Yeah, I can almost, uh, think of something better.
That'd be good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, new business, you wanna go through this cabinet?
Uh, yeah.
This is a lot of unitary that I've got.
And then lower in the kilowatt hour rates, um, due to the LED and subs, it's substantially going down at least two dollars, um, per kilowatt hour. And you also know what I usually like convert to the LED, so I would like to make a motion, if anyone's gonna look at this, to authorize the VP chair to sign the new agreement with unitary.
Basically, didn't drop a lot, but it dropped, converted everything, it goes up now.
It does.
And it's kind of funny, they told us to double our electric bill, but yet they're giving us credit for the streetlights, so. You think that last year, we budgeted twenty-six thousand. On third, we reached a budget of five, you know, you work on, you know, you have to, you know, whatever, four or six. And I don't know what the answer was at this point, less than that.
I think it could be, like, I think it's a small, a small question, because now she has, we should have the LED lights in for a few months, so she knows what the usage is. So she should be able to be careful of that.
And this is where I go up to, I think, June first or something. It goes back to June or something with credit.
I didn't see the letter, this is just for the streetlights?
Yeah, yeah.
And again, I don't know, we can, I don't know if you want to talk about, it's a motion, number second.
Somebody wants to say.
Second.
Discussion, we have time to read the letter before we.
You want some of the ticket, look at this besides us before we sign it?
Nah, it's dropped.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't like the raisin. Yeah, they order it from else. They're calling the mafia. Uh, the other thing is, I think, yeah, I, I, like, it chucks the, 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 the budget to me, so you can chuck a call of the party, just that line down a little bit. But I would consider maybe even a couple, a couple thousand in there to add to what the board feels that way. You know, it's kind of, the way it is now, the streetlights are pretty, um.
Far between.
Not even between where they are, it isn't necessarily a block, I guess, but, um, you might want to consider, if we find a spot, work with the DPW to add lights, maybe money in there. I don't want to light the town, but maybe go a couple of year type thing for safety.
Any other discussion? I was prepared to say hi.
Hi.
No, it's, it's precarious. Here I have, uh, this is the quote I talked about last week, that's one of the figures. Check, this is brought five for the laptop for me, and then I did two iPads for electrical inspector and plumbing inspector, and now we think we ought to add two more for the co-enforcement and health officer, so we can look at stuff with the online.
Amen.
And I think, I thought that's we talked a week ago, I, I, I kind of thought that maybe we didn't need it, laptops, but the, uh, companies seem to think we do. And I was surprised at how cheap the laptops were, they said, that'd be fifteen hundred five.
Any, my next question would be, uh.
I didn't hear this one.
But indeed, interactive, the iPad to be able to, to be, try loads on a laptop, what do you need?
This, and we're meeting with another company, Thursday, we're gonna zoom meeting about like an athletic software to go with this. Just plan in.
I know. And a lot of some.
Other plans, because they've noticed that this is getting ready to skyrocket.
Okay, I knew that we, we would be spending shoes for two more units on the act.
But will the, you know, the, the, the reason you should use a two-bat, I mean, you have four, four iPads and a laptop.
Okay.
Yeah, iPads.
Nice.
And the laptop, if we set it like this, uh, the talking station. Any other discussion? I was prepared to say, I, I, it's precarious.
Sounds like you're running out.
Yeah. Um, sorry, I should have said under our business, but the guy has taken another Falcon and a half, so we're getting pretty close to being out of that room down there. And we're starting to slowly transition and move some people. Uh, because we gotta kind of do it nice and slow, so we don't enter our day-to-day operation. Your alarm system? I think last week, we wanted to talk to Phil about that, I can't remember what.
Probably like the wedding, or the, I mean, are we gonna still have the sub company, if we want something big?
I'll try, you want me to check, I think, before we sign it.
I don't need to get on, I'm there. So, yeah, so put it all the other way, yeah, I can do that, but I'm gonna take that one.
You gonna get these, just look there, you talk to anybody else?
Talking, many, many, many other people.
You close the guy?
Whatever.
You need to be willing to allow her, can you?
I did not, I did not.
We won't be talking to him anymore.
That's false.
Okay, I just, that's a risk.
We're not gonna be able to escape. Um, anything else?
For Phil, for forty.
Phil, you have anything you want to talk about?
What's that, the forecasting thing?
Oh, yeah, the weather forecasting.
Seventy-five dollars and type of the weather list? I mean, I mean, I mean, it's not a risk.
So that's, then I know the stack on that. Bruce Anwer, that you can handle for seventeen years. Uh, it's a localized weather forecastor, just gives us some of the data information following directly, if you have questions, both of us are prepared, and what's gonna happen. Uh, it's utilized by the fire department and police chief as well, when they have events, but, uh, I figure they try and, uh, do a C sheet for Chris Swallow, so. Uh, what they do is they send an email every day, where they basically handle whether the forecast for a period of specifically our town. And it just helps one to expect throughout the day. So as we get into more high-street snow events or mixed events, it just is a forecasting tool that lets us decide whether we need to pull more salt out, whether we, whether we don't, yeah, translate it to safety on that card. But, uh, yeah, it's not cheap, but that's what it's always managed, well, I had a little bit, working, that was the P O last year for it as well, so.